This conference will now be recorded.
Sorry, I saw your text.
Yeah, I agree with that.
It's 9 o'clock, right?
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to you, the government for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, and free to use as we are.
Welcome, everybody, to the May 13th. Number two, approve the agenda.
So much. I'll second it.
All right, motion in the second. Any questions on anything? Okay, all in favor, either in hand or post. Number three is ISAC Years of Service Award.
We have 13 people who will be awarded. So ISAC used to do this at ISAC training. ISAC has turned this over to, basically, the county to do from now on. So it's a Years of Service Award to honor ISAC members for their years of service in county government. So this year, we are doing 10, 20, and 30-year awards. So I'm going to just start. Denise Frazee, 30 years.
Michelle Watson, 10 years. Tony Keith, 10 years. Patricia Knecht, 30 years. You all agreed it, yay, 10 years. And then, yeah, after, if everybody could do a picture, that would be great. Zachariah Fuller. Shane Kirchner, 20 years. Gabriel Melo, 10 years. Craig Birch, 20 years. Amy Chase, 10 years. Matthew Corren, 20 years. John Simmons. No, 10 years. And Uriah Wheatley, 10 years. And if everybody could just get up and take a picture, get them all up here, that would be great. Thank you to everybody. Congratulations to everybody. Cheese, cheese. Good job.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Watch the tripwire.
That's actually our brother.
Empty surround does it. I was wondering, why is there a flare? What's wrong?
What did I miss?
What controversial thing?
Really, that's kind of a testament to the county.
Yep, it is.
Cindy's been here longer than anybody, haven't she?
Right now, yeah. Saturday, Saturday will be 43 years.
Some people, it tells you how old you're getting, too. Never mind.
Let's see, this year, if you change the numbers around, I'm the same age, no matter what. I'm hitting 66 this year.
Okay, number four is the consent agenda, which is the Tuesday, May 6 board meetings, the claims for payment, a tax abatement resolution, and Class C retail alcohol license for Papa's Bar and Grill.
Move to approve consent agenda.
A resolution, so I have a motion in the second. Any discussion?
Nicely.
Aye.
Wander.
Aye.
Holmes.
Aye.
Side.
Aye.
Frazee.
Aye.
Number five is claims for the Board of Health EMS building. Carl Nelson, $60,394.88.
And Chuck brought up that the front cop, the front page of Carl Nelson shows $60,000 and some odd dollars. But if you go on the inside, it's $80-some thousand. So we're going to go ahead and pay the $60,000, since that's what he has on the front covering. If it's different, then we'll pay the...
Okay, so it's not $30,000, or $60?
It's $60, but the inside pages say $80.
I move to approve this amount of $60,000 and something now.
A second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
In the post. Public input, anybody? Have anything you want to discuss that is not on the agenda? Tony?
Hi, my name is Tony Keith. I'm the 911 Director for LECOM, which is Lee County's 911 public safety entry point. And I want to bring you up to date on a piece of legislation that is still in the Iowa Legislature that affects our organization and 911 services in Lee County. It's HSB 332. What this bill was introduced to do is limit the amount of money that passes through to the local 911 service boards from the surcharge that you pay on your cell phone bills. So you pay a dollar every month on your cell phone bill per line. That money is a 911 surcharge. It goes to the state. We get 60 cents out of every dollar back at the local level. That goes to pay for maintenance on our radio towers. It buys radios for firefighters, including rural guys. It puts radios in cars. It buys equipment at LECOM that is not in my regular budget. So they're looking to cut that from a 60-cent pass-through to a 50. And then, in 2029, they'll give us 5 cents back. Starting next fiscal year, the 911 service board is going to start operating at a $64,000 deficit. We do have $1.2 million in reserve funding in the 911 service board. And I know that sounds a lot, or like a lot. But to put that perspective, in order to pay the maintenance contract on our radio towers next fiscal year, it's $235,000. If we continue to work at that deficit with not raising any costs, either due to inflation or equipment malfunction or breakdowns that aren't covered by warranty, we will be broke in 19 years. Again, that sounds like a long time, but that's not improving anything. That's operating status quo. The reason why this bill was introduced, or asked to be introduced by Iowa Homeland Security and Emergency Management, because they don't have enough money to pay their bills. So they want to take more money out of the local level in order to continue the programs they're doing. So it is going to hurt Lee County. I had a very good conversation yesterday with Representative Watkins, and he doesn't think it's going to get through this legislative session. But there's a lot of groundwork that's coming up that they'll definitely introduce in next year. The first bill that was introduced, actually, was 44 cents, is what the pass-through was going to be to us. That bill failed. There's only one agency or one lobbyist in Iowa that's for this bill, and happens to be the lobbyist for the Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, the only agency that's going to reap the benefits of this. Our ask, 911 directors across the state, EMA, 911 service boards, we're actually requesting a percentage increase in your 911 surcharge that you pay on your bill. So you've been paying a dollar, like I said, for about 13 years. That hasn't gone up. We're requesting a 20-cent raise in order to make the system better, to allow growth, and to keep up with technology. So it's a very little, minimal raise on your cell phone bill, 20 cents per line. My humble opinion is, is I think I'd pay $2 a month if I knew that every time my phone dialed 911, a dispatcher, or telecommunicator, or a firefighter, or law enforcement can pinpoint where you're at. That's, to me, that's money well spent. I know Representative Rinker in Des Moines County that kind of represents Denmark and Weaver. He was in favor of raising it to $2 and taking care of everything that we need to take care of and then see where we're at. I don't know what his position is on that anymore. But the message I got from the chairman of the committee said there's $66 million statewide that's sitting in reserve funds for 911 service boards, and that's too much. He didn't like that I put out that there are billions of dollars that the state has in reserve funding. But, you know, we have a rainy day fund because anything can happen in 911. I mean, if we have a natural disaster in this area and we lose a tower, that's a million bucks. And that's not replacing any equipment. That's just putting the tower down. Insurance is going to cover some of that. But we have huge expenses, and technology is growing way too fast. We've been ahead of the curve, but we're going to start falling behind. And it's scary if we get our funding cut. So I would encourage people in the public to reach out to your representatives. I've reached out to Senator Reifman, even though this bill's not in the Senate. I put it on his radar. I got an automated message saying he'll look into it. I haven't heard anything else. But I don't know what's going to happen this session. It's going to come out next year. I would encourage you to contact your representatives and let them know that taking money away from the county level is not a good idea. Any questions?
Is there much resistance to just raising that surcharge fee from $1 to $1.50 or $2?
So according to the state 911 program manager, when they went to the governor's office to talk about a proposal, they were met at the door and told, "We're not raising anything. Figure it out."
So I think it's important that we do, that people get a hold of their state representatives to make sure that their wishes are known, one. And then number two, Tony brings up a very good point, and we all know that. The nice thing about technology is it's great when it works, but it gets outdated very quickly. And to update it and keep it current, it costs money. And so not only the towers, but the radios, the software, the programming, things of that nature. So I think it's important that we do voice our opinions on this one and make sure that we're keeping up to date. Keep in mind, we've transferred completely over, so we don't have any of the old, there's no analog anymore.
The only thing we operate on analog is we have to have an analog channel to talk to the helicopter out of Fort Madison, and we have to have an analog channel to activate storm sirens of those communities that have.
So we're totally integrated right now in the new system. And so we're all in. And so we need to maintain it.
And I would really encourage people not to just sit back on this, even though it appears as though nothing will happen in this session. We're in loony times with the legislation now. We're beyond therperdium, and all kinds of things happen at 10, 11 o'clock at night after a full day of caucus. So if you feel strongly about this, absolutely speak to your legislators now, in my opinion.
Well, to Tony's point, if there's something that has got this much discussion throughout the entire session and it doesn't make it through this year, it'll be teed up for next year, especially if they're saying it's going to be done.
And I have a point, one other thing I failed to mention is the 911 service board doesn't, there's no salary, there's no benefits. None of that gets paid through. They do pay LECOM a contract fee to do 911 addressing and make sure that the street spans and the grids are all updated. In order to make that happen, we get grant money back from the state. So, I mean, that takes a lot of work. Amber and I both work on that while we're doing our regular day jobs. So there's no salaries involved with that. Nobody's getting a huge pay raise. I mean, that's, we receive $317,000 a year through that surcharge. Our budget next year is $385,000. That's very minimal padding. I mean, we've cut, or we can cut. I mean, we're going to be frugal, but we're still going to operate at a deficit. And if we have to take 10 cents off, you know, it's going to, it's a pretty big cut.
What was that bill number?
332.
Is that Senate bill?
HSB.
HSB.
So Tony, what would you do? I mean, you're not a levy authority, obviously. So what would you guys do?
There's no way, but I guess we're going to operate...
Remember the emergency management fund? Is that?
No.
No, I remember that.
So the 911 service board and PSAP are two separate things.
911 gets funded by just the surcharge on your telephone. You got wireless, and you got the landlines. They're two different funding streams.
So everybody in Iowa pays a dollar on their cell phone bill, and if you still have a home line, you pay a dollar on it. And all that money goes to the state. They keep 40%, they pass through 60. Another thing that this bill does...
The landlines come from the telephone companies.
Right, and actually, we're responsible for collecting that at the local level, but that's going to change as part of this legislation. The other thing that changes, at the end of the year, after the Iowa Homeland Security, after they ran their operational budget, if they have, I don't know, a million dollars left over at the end of the year, they funnel all of that back out to the PSAPs, so the 911 call center. So for years, we've been getting like $10,000 at the end of every year. This bill allows them to keep half and put in their rainy day fund. And they only pass through half. So last year, they kept everything because they operated at kind of a deficit. And I know where their deficit spending is at. They had too many people, I think, come onto the ISIC system, which is the statewide radio system, and they couldn't keep up with what they needed to provide for infrastructure. So they're running behind on their bills. And also, our new 911 phone system. You know, the whole state's on the same 911 system. And I think too many people came on that at one time and were like, "Oh, we were hoping this wouldn't catch fire." And too many people signed up for it. And now they're running behind on what they can expend, so.
Tony, do you happen to know how well insured the tower and the equipment is?
Yes.
For insurance?
Yeah. I mean, we're good on insurance. We actually had a claim because the Weaver Tower got hit by lightning, and LECOM got hit by lightning a year ago? Eight months ago?
Isn't there a $25,000 deductible on each line for that?
When that hit, when that hit, that was still on EMC, wasn't it?
Yes.
So EMC actually paid for the dispatch when it really didn't need to. But since it was one event, EMC decided to pay for the whole thing.
I'm not sure what our deductible is now, but...
Seems to me it went up to $25,000 in the last year from 10, per incident.
And that's something we don't budget for because it affects...
It's the county's.
The county's budget. So, I mean, that's something we don't budget for. That's something that we could, so I have a line item in the 911 surcharge or the 911 service board that we can expend probably if we have to buy equipment. That used to be $75,000 a year.
No, I think it wasn't. It was higher.
I think it was higher. Last year, it was 75. This year, we bumped it down to 50. We've never expended that much. It was kind of a padding to put back in the reserves. But, you know, if I lose a console, so if a console just breaks, in order to replace the desks that hold my equipment, it's $18,000, and that's a base model. $18,000 because it has to have all the connections. It has to be able to raise and lower based on who's sitting there. I mean, they're expensive. So those are things we try to plan for, but insurance deductibles aren't. Any other questions? Sorry.
No, thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, thank you.
Please reach out, let them know your thoughts. Hopefully, you're against not taking money away from the local level is never a good thing, I don't think so. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tony. Anybody else?
I'm wondering if we, as a board, could send a letter to our state legislators.
I forget if it's going to be over.
Yeah, but it may not be worth it.
I think we need to have an email maybe to Reifman. And I'll do it as a finance person for the 911 team. I'll send one out.
Playing with you to focus if you want to.
Playing.
It's in the House.
Anybody else? Let's move on then. Discussion and possible action of contract negotiation letter to Harris for Solutions.
Thank you. Coming down on behalf of several different departments. It's not just me here, but I have been very active in producing the letter that you have in your packets. Now, we just handed out a separate agreement and letter, and that's because Solutions has modified the agreement since last Friday, when the agenda was sent down, the report packet was sent out. And so I actually modified the letter, so you have the new copy of the new letter there as well. So basically, what the problem is, is Solutions is the software that about six or seven departments use in the county for financial management, record-keeping, asset management, lots of other things. Custom software for counties. It's produced by a company, well, it's called Solutions. It's purchased by another company called Harris. We were in a five-year price lock until this past fiscal year, well, actually, the current fiscal year. This is the last year of that price lock. They have raised the price 22% for next fiscal year, which, while it's high, isn't the purpose of our objections. The agreement was also modified considerably. And it was done so very sloppy. Sloppily, I don't know if that's a word. But in changing the agreement, they made some pretty, I guess, important changes in the way that we can communicate with other counties, the way we can communicate with other providers who might offer support related to the software, as well as a number of other things. And so I've met with some of the department leaders that were involved with Solutions, using their software, as well as Ross Braden, county attorney. And then we also, we met to discuss the contract and our objections to it. I took those objections to the ICIT, which is the IT affiliate for ISAC that I'm a member of. With about 20 or so, about two dozen other counties, we've developed the letter that's in front of you. And we want to present this as a unified front, asking for changes in the contract. And so those are spelled out in that letter. I can go over anything you'd like, but basically, it's all there in black and white in front of you. So what I'm asking is that the board members all sign the letter and all the related department heads and county attorneys sign that letter as well. And that we send that letter with the two dozen or so other counties that are sending similar letters, so that we can present the unified.
She doesn't, other than him, everyone. Everybody that's with Solutions, probably.
There's about 38 counties. We've been talking about two dozen.
But when's our contract actually due? Isn't it this week?
The con, no, the contract, well, the contract expires at the end of June.
Oh, okay.
So July 1st is when the new contract...
What was the date coming up, though, that we had? Didn't we have a date on something?
Tomorrow is the date that we would like to send.
Okay, that's the date. I knew there was something we had in date.
And I know, when I was auditing, my staff was very unhappy with Solutions.
Hasn't changed.
He could tell us better than probably a lot of us. The service and support is really...
Oh, gosh, yeah.
But it was, Solutions and Greg Davis, it was pretty good. But then when Harris thought it, it just went down.
We've been waiting weeks for some support request.
Yeah.
We've been waiting months, haven't we, Nancy?
Yeah, just for one thing, yeah.
I'd make the motion that we approve the memorandum or the contract negotiation letter to Harris for Solutions.
A second.
Yeah, a motion in the second. Anybody have anything they also want to ask your business? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The document, then, that we hand out this morning, on the back of that document, please, the one.
Standard pass.
Sorry.
All right, thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Great, discussion and possible...
I think you want to sign, Cindy?
Yeah.
Discussion and possible action on memorandum of understanding with Department of Management for security software.
So now I'm here for, it's my random understanding for the Iowa Department of Management. They provide some security software for the CrowdStrike. So that's the software that got a bad name last year because it tipped down half the airports in the country. But we do find the software very, very valuable and want to continue using it. They offer it to us for free, but they have this understanding that lays out what they'll do and what they won't do. Along with that CrowdStrike software, they actually provide a 24/7 SOC, a security operations center. So they actually monitor several things that go on in all of their PCs and their server software. So when I use something, tries to attack something, they'll actually call me and let me know. Or get ahold of us if it's a less severe thing through email. It's a very valuable service. All we have to do is say, "Yep, we understand why you do what we do."
I'd make the motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding with the Department of Management for security software.
I'll second that. A motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Either in hand or opposed. Motion, please.
Thanks, everyone.
Nine, consider approval of a proposal for Bridge 31, geotechnical investigation by GeoTech.
Thank you. So this bridge 31 is on 145th Street over West Branch of Sugar Creek, sort of east of the Mount Hamel area, I guess. This is necessary for us to continue the design as discussed when we presented our five-year plan, where we're hoping to put this project out for bid for grid replacement in November. I'm going to approve the proposal for Bridge 31.
I'll second you.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion or questions for Ben? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Either in hand or opposed.
Thank you.
Ten, consider approval of a resolution establishing fire safety and emergency response standards for wind energy conversion systems and solar farm energy systems in Indian County, Iowa. Can we chat this one?
Would you like me to speak to you?
Yes.
The priority of this is the safety of the citizens of Lee County. The renewable energy sector, as we know, you guys have been working on it for a long time. It is coming. Any type of call that would be associated with these systems is going to be technical in nature. It's going to be, it's not where the alarm goes off and we're there for 30, 45 minutes and then we're going back home. It's going to be a very detailed incident. It takes some time. So with that in mind, like I said, my priority is always the safety of the citizens of Lee County and the firemen, and I'm here representing not just the firemen of Fort Madison, but the firemen of Lee County. Absolutely do not want any fireman to get hurt in any way, shape, or form, either two days or 20 years down the road. This ordinance provides avenues to support the renewable energy sector. As they're wanting to come to Lee County, they're already here. But it also protects the fire departments, allows them some avenues to recover costs since these incidents will be a long-term event, so.
And this was approved by the entire fire system?
Yes, yep, yep, yep.
My only question is, this doesn't mention battery storage.
What's that now?
This doesn't mention the battery storage.
Right at the end, I put in the best systems right towards the end.
Obviously, here in the key rate, I believe, the type of humidity condition almost cited.
That was my question. I didn't see the battery either.
I think it was downright towards the very end. I... Want me to come show you where I, where it's supposed to be?
Where it should be?
Let's see.
So you got Page 1, then scroll through that, then Page 2.
Yeah, I didn't see the best unit.
Oh, I didn't.
Yep, there it is. I was going to say, I probably had it in there. Pre-incident notification, facility operator must notify your local partner to each turn on solar field first. Okay. Unit Johnson, etc., yes. But just that they need to notify, that doesn't...
Well, it's associated with the solar fields. The best unit is where the power that is generated from the solar field, so it's all part of the solar generating system.
But not all are, are they? Battery?
No, it's just...
They're not all part of solar?
So if you have the end-to-end system that's coming, they'll just be a standalone?
A standalone.
Yeah. But...
That's not a concern, that we don't have that.
Yeah, with it, as written, does this cover special fees for a standalone best? So we want to be sure those are covered.
Right, right. Absolutely. I can, I can make that change.
Is that a resolution tied to the ordinance by chance? The ordinance definitely...
It's a resolution to the Lee County ordinance. Point.
It is.
It is.
And it is. Across the top, you have it attached to the sparse, yeah.
Right.
So it might just be... Do you want to have a might or do you...
I personally would want it spelled out, but it's...
Spell it out?
Just to help come you guys in the future, if you're...
Yeah, if you want to just make that change or make some...
I would make that amendment and get to you.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'd hate first to go through the process and then have you have some incident at one of those standalones and it not be...
Some lawyer would find the loophole.
It not be covered.
So should we table this? I moved the table.
No, I would say make your motion contingent upon that change.
Yeah.
And then he can get a new resolution.
I can get that done today.
Sure. You'll just email him?
We'll just sign it.
I'd make the motion that we approve the resolution establishing fire safety emergency response standards for wind energy conversion systems and solar farm energy systems to include the best. Be added.
Second.
I think that'll work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Jim, did you second it, all right?
Tim did.
Tim did. Okay. Si?
Aye.
Wondra?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Naisley?
Aye.
Crazy?
Aye.
Motion Gary, so thanks, Jeff, for that work. Eleven. Consider an approval of budget amendment for FY '25 and set date for public...
Okay, this is the last budget amendment that we can do for the year. And looked like everybody was pretty good. You guys, for the board of supervisors, was over 90%. So I just decided to go ahead and put a little extra appropriations in for you to get you through the year. And the things I added was the HR part for the lawyer was a little oversub, put an extra $25,000 in there. ARPA, we had expended $11,000 some dollars more than what we had originally budgeted, so I wanted to get that up to enough. And the other thing was that we didn't budget the $50,000 that we gave in the... Oh, wait.
Okay.
I keep one thing dry, I think, what is it? Help you win fund.
Oh, to the town.
Yeah, so that gives you at least 50, 75, probably $86,000. That should hopefully satisfy for the rest of the year. And then I did all the amendments to have all those fund transfers we did with ATEC 1 and ATEC 2 because I usually put appropriations in there, so I wanted to get those in. So that's the only...
And none of the department staff?
None of the other departments.
Yay, good job, guys. Okay. And the public hearing? Is... 5:27 at 9:01 a.m.
And I make the motion to approve the unbudgeted amendment.
Set date?
Second. Oh, go ahead, Chuck.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any other questions for Cindy? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Reports. Please to receive and file the auditor's report, treasurer's report, and sheriff's report. Part 10 is personnel actions, a temporary Part 10 new hire conservation, is that your seasonal?
Yep.
Seasonal, yep. New hire for the sheriff's office, a correctional officer, a step increase for the treasurer's office, and two step increases for the health department.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any other questions?
The beach is open if we do it. Was it a beach, was it a beach?
Yeah.
Beach and...
I said, the beach is open if we approve it.
Okay. You're the first one. All right. Motion second?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Now you have it.
Now you're gonna... Any reports? Chuck, you want to start today?
Sure. Tim and I both attended the crime meeting last week ago today. See if I can find it here. The Thrive Committee has been waiting for the school district to appoint a new superintendent, so they did approach the school about its being willing to be a fiscal agent for Thrive here in town. And superintendent's yet appointed, so I think they will be approaching the school district soon about that issue. Once a fiscal agent is secured, Thrive will apply for a drug-free community grant, which will provide for the salaries for the Thrive people. Also, the board believes it's time to put the logic model they developed out in the field by hosting a booth at public gatherings such as the Back to School Fair being sponsored by the Lee County Health Department, Lee County Fair itself, farmers' markets, Baxter Sports Complex events, at Rodeo, Mexican Fiesta, and at the various festivals during the summer season. So it wants to get out and make itself more visible in the community. Today, Lee County Conservation is meeting at 5:00 p.m. Also, I received a letter. If I can find it here. Once again, I received some correspondence from Miranda Slawford, the executive director of Mississippi Valley Workforce Development. You may remember about six or eight months ago, they let us know that they lost the contract with their fiscal agent at that time. So they hired an in-house fiscal agent and hired a new person to do that. Well, I received a letter from Miranda a few days ago saying she's writing confirmas that their fiscal agent has submitted her resignation with their last working day being Friday, May 23rd. The position has been posted, and we are moving quickly to identify qualified replacement to maintain continuity in our financial operations. So they're having a problem of their of some sort or another. And I think I said that Lee County Conservation is meeting today at 5:00 p.m. That's it.
Gary?
So I had some meetings last week. On Wednesday, I had a SARIFA meeting with Port Authority. I think that news is out there, and I've seen several articles on it. But they're doing a pivot from the Career Advantage Center, actually being out there to, it's going to be at SCC, so that ability or that resource in the county is still in the county. And that opens kind of up the space out there for Lee County Economic Development for another really inspiring project that is going to meet one of our core needs in Lee County with childcare and a three-year-old preschool is what they're looking at doing. And they're also looking at applying for, the main thrust of that meeting was getting approval to apply for a $2.38 million, I think is what they were looking at, grant through Marina Miller Meeks' office at the federal level to be able to get that off and running. It'd be about 12 to 18 months before, if that grant is approved, probably 12 to 18 months before we saw that space actually receive, us receive the money and that space actually receive the updates. But for me, that's a big win for Lee County, for us being able to help out, not only with our childcare, but we all know Lee County is number one in child abuse neglect. And I think that would go a long ways to helping us, get us out of that number one spot.
Gary, I quite like this idea too, but I'm just wondering, will parents be willing to drive their child every day 10, 15 miles back and forth twice a day?
I can tell you that people drive right now, you'd be surprised the distances people drive now. 10 to 15 miles is not out of the question for a lot of people. The other thing that they looked at is along that corridor, I think it was 1500, 1800, 1500? 1500 workers along the 61 corridor. So just that corridor along there, we have several factories in the area. And then it is essentially located between our major population centers. And then again, if you go to the north, it's almost square in the middle of the three school districts as well.
And one of the foundations of the project is that there's preliminary agreement from all three school districts to provide transportation so that you can be engaging in a full-day care situation. So parents can drop their children off in the morning and pick them up in the evening, rather than midday having to transport their own children back and forth between preschool and childcare and things like that. So I think that's going to be the key, Chuck, is that full-day care.
The other big thing that should be noted is that all three school districts are in, and this is not any one school district, you know, using this as a recruiting tour or anything like that. It does happen to, just because of physical location, the building would be in central school district. But all three school districts, Kiak, Fort Madison, and Central Lee are all, at this point, are all leaning into this project and really want to see it happen. So I think that's a, that's a great thing. It's a win for Lee County. Anytime that we can bring several groups together and do something that helps our kids, that helps the county, I'm all for that. So that was my Port Authority meeting. I had the Miller Financial Meeting, Miller Financial Meeting at 1:00. And I did take some notes during that. The CDVG and Marina Miller Meeks Community Project Funds, Chuck correctly wronged his. Brittany Ramis is in, is our contact with it. USDA now is with Melina Tapia? Tapia and Dean Fisher, North and South Lee County Community Fund, obviously Roger Ricketts. To date, we've spent 100% of the CDVG funding, which that's $600,000, so that money's all in. The ARPA money is all in. And the $500,000 from the North and South Lee County Community Funds that we've received to date is all in, which would account for approximately $2.1 million. At the meeting, Melina indicated that the USDA, USDA funds may now be utilized for funding as accounting as met the threshold of expenditures from other funds, including that ARPA and that North and South Lee County Community Fund and the USDA funds. Just to recap, all the funds that we have received must be utilized in order. And so just to kind of let everybody know that order is, we had to put our money in first. We had to put the community funding in next. The CDVG grant was done as a percentage as we spent money, they put money in there with it. That's now been exhausted. The second to last in will be the USDA funds, which is approximately $1,906,000. 76, I call it a million, but yeah, 976,000. And then the final, last in money will be the community project funding at the federal level, which is a little over $2,000.
Is that the Miller Meeks?
That's the Miller Meeks funding. And then I have, I did attend, I think I mentioned this last week, I don't know if I mentioned it this meeting, but I did attend a function in Kiak that Roger was at, and he did indicate that there may be some additional funding coming from...
He just told me the same thing. He'll be back.
Yeah, so that he'll be back, and then that funding will become available as well. But it was just nice to get everybody together and put names to faces as they changed a little bit. We've got a project that spans two, three years. And we want to keep it updated. The other thing we decided at the meeting, I think, is we're going to try to consolidate some meetings, it sounded like. And we're going to try to get a meeting, hopefully it doesn't, they don't look too long. We're going to try to get an operational and then the financial tail talking together.
Did I dare ask how much we're short?
We didn't talk, well, right now, so if you add up all of the funding that we've got, we should be at... I don't have these...
And now it was about 5.5, wasn't it?
5.5, I think it's where we're at, and we're looking at 6.
Okay.
It's a little over 6, and we have a contingency of up to 6.5. So right now, we're on track, and...
And I did get all March and April's bills sent to Brittany.
Right.
But then for the other USDA and stuff, I need a document that I need to do and that you need to sign. So if you're in town sometime later this week, I might be sent.
So we have $600,000, the 500, from the Community Development Block grant, $500,000 from the North and South Lee County Charitable Fund, that's 1.1 million, plus the USDA funds, call that a million, that's 1.2.1 million there, plus the 2.2 of the...
Millions.
Miller Meeks, that brings us to 4.3, plus...
ARPA, can that in there?
Yeah, so Community Development and ARPA, a million bucks, yeah. So that's 5.3.
Okay, all right. Let's propose.
Yeah, and then, like I said, we've still got, North and South Lee County Charitable Fund is still out there working. Again, I've been telling people, you know, it's not too late. I know Roger had the one big push, but there's still funding coming in even now. So I don't know what that number is that Roger's got, but he's smiling every time that I talk. I consider that, I consider that a good sign. And then just, again, what we'll do is, that's where we're also looking at that funding from the ATEC camera. Trying to protect that a little bit, just in case we've got a...
While you're on the health department. We got the email from Mark that the electricians have gone on strike.
Plumbers.
Wonders.
Wonders?
Wonders.
Okay, so, uh, what's the latest on that, are they still on strike?
Yes.
They are.
Right on. So you're kind of a little bit at a standstill right now?
No, we're not at a complete standstill, but there's going to be some hesitation that it worked out. Because it's got some, our calls are scrapping out for that month to do before they can go in and finish. Uh, Thursday, had a super board meeting, uh, that was an interesting uh, group there, and I, I think that's going to continue. Our next meeting is in October, I think all of us were present for that.
Yep.
Uh, but uh, it was just, it was a good chance to see kind of who's who in Lee County, that they can potentially work together, hear what everybody's got going on. And then, you know, if we, if there's something that interests someone, we can jump in and ask. Uh, but I think it just, it's a good way to network and to know what's going on in the county and how another group may be able to add uh, or piggyback off of something that someone else is killing. All schools, let's see, all schools were there, county government uh, was there, city governments were there, some of them.
I, I'm sorry, I publicly say I was disappointed in the turnout from Kiak, thank you so much to Kiak schools, but no other representation.
So uh, it's just an opportunity for everybody to, to be able to come and give their, their, hey, what's, what are we doing and how somebody else may be able to piggyback off of that, so.
That was impressive, Donaldson.
Yeah.
High works too.
To hear what they've got going on, that's amazing, they got, they really do.
Really good intention.
So that was good, uh, after that, had the nine-one-one meeting, Tony uh, talked about uh, that HSB. Three thirty-two. Uh, that's a big deal, it's a concern. And again, I just can't express enough that we, we need to be talking to our legislators on that one. Uh, the long term, short term, we're in, we're in pretty good shape, but long term, uh, that, that can't happen.
I'd like to add on that uh, the dispatch center is in need of upgrading their software for dispatching the fire departments, uh, period, you know, and that's a couple hundred thousand dollars, I believe. So he, he, he didn't even mention that on top of everything else.
And, and I don't want everybody to think, you know, hey, just spend, 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 because it's not, there's also, there's, you know, the nine-one-one is a good job of doing some savings where they can, like for, here's a good, for instance, that I heard during the meeting. Was that all the firemen now have gone to apps which ironically are on their phones, uh, instead of having to actually use the pagers, those pagers are about eight hundred bucks a pop. And so now we're not having, the nine-one-one board's not having to buy as many pagers because they're actually going to, a lot of the firemen are going to their cell phones with an app. But that app has software that has to be on the nine-one-one center, has to be kept up to date. And so, you know, why are we maybe not going through as many pagers, again, it's that, that software and that equipment in the nine-one-one center is what allows all that to be running, so uh, they look for efficiencies where they can.
And the, and the current software too requires, like, it's like a seventeen-step process for them to dispatch a fire department. That's, that's really, but we, we got to get with the times, you know, and that's not Tony or, or Lee Combs' fault. Uh, that's just where the system was at, but it needs upgrading.
Is there a monthly fee for that app and cell phones or?
It's, it's an annual fee, yes, I, I don't know what the cost is, but it, it is an annual fee that uh, it's, it's called I am responding. It's based on call volume along with the number of fire departments.
So, uh, other than that, it was a good meeting, uh, Tim was hurting too much, I guess. Uh, this coming week, uh, I've got a board meeting today. I was going to tour the health department building later on Saturday, but I think I'm ending it once, if I get the calendar fixed. Uh, tomorrow, I have a meeting tomorrow.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
So, City Development Board, one o'clock, and that one may be a long one, sounds like maybe like one to three. Uh, and then I have, Thursday, I have a Lee County Economic Development Board meeting at seven. And then I have the Lee County Economic Develop, or no, the Health Department and EMS building meeting at one on Thursday. Other than that, I think.
Okay, for me, huh, still much fun to already. Uh, so last Tuesday, after a board meeting here, I went off to the Iowa Transmission, ITC, they had their line meeting about the, have all these lines coming through uh, to the area. They're at the very beginning stages of it, that was the first official meeting they had to have, so that way now they can post by Iowa utilities. Well, commission, there we go, yeah. They have to host that, so now the ITC can go out and negotiate with landowners for easements to get that all done. Um, they're hoping to have all these agreements done by the end of twenty twenty-six to start construction twenty twenty-eight. So we're a few years out, but it's one of those things to keep it on your radar because it's always a threat of minimum, for many, it's not stuff, so. Avoid that, but it's possible. Um, also on Tuesday, that was Kevin Harder, we went over IT stuff, kind of a monthly meeting, the things that are going on with ID departments coming up, uh, any issues that, obstacles and some future possibilities, some stuff we discussed on that. Uh, Wednesday, a thrive meeting, Chuck said, we had a very good meeting there, it's kind of, kind of funny that we couldn't get that passed through, they didn't get their fiscal agent set up, but. They're going to get the name out there for next year, to let the community know what they are and what they do. Uh, Thursday, we had a super meeting, I was at that one, I was, I said, very good, got, got to put some names to faces, that was kind of nice to do too. Um, and then the East nine-one-one board meeting that night. Also, kind of the other discuss was uh, the tornado sign warning system, you know? You know, everybody's, everyone now has their cell phones with you, those are almost more accurate, more up to date on the warning system versus with the tornado signs. You know, at what point do those signs come off, so, because those are super expensive to either update the tower itself or the software that, again, that they have to use to man those, so it looks like you just say, it's obsolete technology, they don't need it anymore. So, that was something we kind of discussed, again, looking to the future on that one. Uh, and then this week, uh, meets afternoon with Mark with a new filter, some go troops and buildings, uh, tour that stuff. Thursday morning is the Lee County Economic Development Board meeting, and then Friday morning, I have the landfill commission meeting.
That's it. Good.
That's what's stopping, I like it.
Um, so yeah, we had some, like, like several of us said, we had some overlapping, we were all at the super board meeting. I too just was, was really encouraged by all the positive things happening throughout the county and, and the turnout in general for that. Um, then uh, Denise and I are working on figuring out the delegation of, of duties and funds and all of that around our community services um, segment. I think, I think that's coming together um, pretty well. Um, the Health Department is working on aligning their wage policies and procedures and whatnot with our countywide personnel policies, I think that's moving along well. It, it's, it's a big job, it's a big job, yeah, but I think it's, I think it's moving along, yeah. Um, and tonight at four is the Compassion fatigue um, that I gave you flyers for. Uh, I think that's about it for me.
We had a conference board, board, board meeting.
It was, it was a slow, well, it was a slow week for me at this table.
At the conference board, um, I went to everything that everybody else went to, and just talked about my other rest board meeting tomorrow. And that, but yes. Okay, I'm going to adjourn the meeting, thank you.
Yay.
Thank you.
Do we have any workshop after?
No.
I did a cursory glance at those outdoor warnings and things, and there are some communities that have decided already, you know, to do away with them.
What about? Slow circuits, that's fine.
It's, it's uh, there's a gray area in there because you, you, you shouldn't, you have to assume that you have to take, take uh, into account the people that may have a cell phone or have the phone that has the ability to take.
So I wonder about my kids.
It's on the radio, it's on the radio.
Running around on other things, that's a thing, that, to me, that's where I get.
Yeah. That's something we gotta weigh.
Most of those kids?
Yeah.
They need more of it, yeah.
I keep hoping not, but.
And they know how to run them better than we do.
Yeah, there was a couple of.
Right.
Yeah, that's something that.
They are expensive, man, they're, they're, I don't know, it's.
Are those mainly, mainly at the city's expense?
The, the ones here in town are, yeah. They're just going down. But it's uh. It's, it's, it makes me wonder, you know, are, are we evolving with the times?
Right.
Or may, or maybe we're not quite there yet, I don't know, we're, we're in that period.
May tend for another four, five years and then, then are we done, done, or, yeah. That's me, just one thing to keep on.
I know it, I know it. Take care.
Have a good day.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. Well, should we not find this because he's going to change the purpose? I guess it's not allowed.
It is on that page, I was thinking that too, you probably shouldn't.
Just the new one next.
Don't, I'll get you guys a new one.
Sign the last page.
I don't know if the last page will change though, if he counts.
He, it's going to probably change, because he didn't give me all those signatures, I have the signatures.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'll redo it, guys, I'll redo it. I'll redo it.
Sorry.
No, I, no, good call, good catch.
There's a circle on the way here.
Uh, to freeze.
I am freezing.
Eighteen thousand.
Before you went to Earth for Lee County, did you work elsewhere? For your thirty years at Lee County, were you employed elsewhere?
Hey, Garrett, we just got an email about the Mayor's meeting. Twenty-first on thirty. He sent it to someone again, or thing, uh, calendar invites.
Oh, we're at two point six, five, six million dollars an hour rate.
Two point six?
So she's from that bridge, that's what I keep saying. It'll be neat, have you seen it?
So, one more thing I had to add. Something we're hoping not to have to add twice or less, but what are we adding?
I think next time you guys all go somewhere, don't I, shouldn't I publish something?
No, it's.
We didn't sit together.
No. Like, we were all at that meeting.
If we should have posted in advance that we were all going to be at the super board meeting?
You know, some of that stuff.
Yeah.
We clearly did not discuss anything, so.
I freely can publish that, yeah, so, you know, I think just, uh, just this.
I just think some of that stuff's really, I mean, we show up in places, we're all together anyway.
Yeah.
But something like that, I was saying, probably, yeah, if I don't have time to watch that.
It doesn't hurt.
You know, it doesn't hurt.
Well, then, does that need to be archived and recorded? Like, uh, when, anytime you publish that we are having a meeting of, of either of us.
No, nope, nope, I just publish it.